So.
What's the meeting to order? Roll call things.
There's one.
Here.
There's a greeting.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Just a little bit.
Here.
Mr. Trainor, here. Mr. Rivera. Was that a reading?
Here.
Notice of this meeting was provided as the Burnsville News and Courier News filed with the municipal clerk and Post Lead on the municipal bulletin board on December fifth, twenty twenty four. Please stand for the plate during the chance to.
And that would just stipulate the meeting is based on the county republic. Second, what is it? It is involved in thirty eight.
Welcome to the February twenty fourth meeting of the Burnsville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in the council chambers in the borough. It is being worked on on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who adhere in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment and advocate during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings on ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the borough clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language or language constituted against speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of their three minutes of allotted time or if they make any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state their names and addresses before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body and audience. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and or participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. All right. We have a couple of presentations tonight. We have our planner, Mr. Caldwell here. As all of you know, we're in round four of affordable housing, and I thought it would be an opportunity for the public, as well as the council and some of our newer council members, to get an understanding of the whole process and how it works and how it's going to affect us. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I have a PowerPoint presentation we're gonna follow along. Basically giving, as the mayor said, a broad overview of the fourth round of affordable housing, what our obligations are, how they look direct, where we are in the process, and where we plan on going, how we plan on addressing in a beginning sense these obligations. So since we've got ready, okay. So on March twentieth, twenty twenty four, Governor Murphy signed into law legislation that amended the Fair Housing Act and essentially laid the groundwork for the fourth round obligation of what we're in, twenty twenty five to twenty thirty five. That legislation abolished the Council on Affordable Housing, which was kind of in a bay during round three anyways, but officially abolished it and established what's called the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program. And that program takes the place of what COA used to do and also takes the place of what the courts were doing in round three of reviewing and approving certifying our housing elements and fair share plans, as well as resolving disputes that arise during the process. So there are some significant changes to the law, which I will go through on this slide. So the dispute resolution program is really kind of a court-based program. It's sort of quasi-judicial. It's set up outside of the courts, but in order to access it, we submit declaratory judgment actions. It's staffed with retired Mount Laurel judges, as well as some current Mount Laurel judges. And that program is charged with resolving disputes through the program. Essentially, they come up, they're rushed, and I'll talk about sort of different deadlines that we have and different times when different parties can object to what a municipality does through the program. So program judges will issue orders going throughout the process, approving or disapproving essentially our housing elements fair share plan. And they also issued a directive which sets forth some additional obligations outside of the Fair Housing Act for housing elements of fair share plans, and we'll talk about those as well. Also set up how the program is slated to work, since it was set up in the legislation, but didn't really have a place and a function until December of this year. Very rapid. It's gonna be tough. So next slide. So what does this mean? Our next big deadline is June thirtieth. We have to adopt a housing element fair share plan either on or before June thirtieth, but within forty-eight hours of when we adopt it, it needs to be submitted to the program. So the plan basically covers twenty twenty five to twenty thirty five. So it's our fourth round obligation, and we have a bunch of deadlines in between that I'll talk about. So next. So we have some key milestones, you can keep going. So we met the first deadline. We had January twenty third, January thirty first, twenty twenty five was the deadline for the borough to accept DCA's obligation or propose our own obligation. What we did through resolution twenty five dash thirty was adopted on January twenty seventh, was accept the DCA obligation of one hundred and thirteen respective need units. The present need, which is a rehabilitation need, was set at zero, so we don't have to address those. That was filed on the website within forty-eight hours as required and then filed with the program through declaratory judgment on January twenty ninth. So we met the first two deadlines. So we're in good shape so far. The next deadline is the, this Friday, the twenty eighth, is the deadline for any interested party to object to our number. We did accept DCA's obligation that was presented, so we're hopeful that there won't be an objection, but you never know in this case. So if it's not objected to, then our numbers essentially become valid on March first, and we can move forward. If it is objected to, then the program has essentially till March thirty first to resolve that objection. And that's what I mean when I say that they're very quick deadlines to try to resolve issues within the program. And then our next milestone is that June thirtieth deadline for the housing element and fair share plan. That also includes ordinances and resolutions. And there's a little bit of conflict between what the regulations say and what the directive said from the program about having ordinances and resolutions. I currently am interpreting it that we can put in draft ordinances and resolutions because the regulations say we have until March of twenty twenty six to adopt ordinances. So fingers crossed that is really what we have to deal with because just getting the housing plan done, the time is a lot. To try to expect to have ordinances drafted and adopted as well is a lot. So once that's submitted by June thirtieth, we have until August thirty first for any interested parties to object to that plan. Once that follows, you can do the next slide, then if there are no objections, then the plan is reviewed essentially by the program according to affordable housing regulations and the directive. And then if the plan is deemed to be compliant, we get certified at that point. If there are challenges, there's a process set forth, a satellite conference, then a session, and then the program is supposed to issue a decision within ten days of any session. So again, it's very rapid decision-making if there is any objections. Keep going. So the March fifteenth deadline is the following deadline by the statute that says that all the ordinances and implementing ordinances and resolutions, all the compliance documents, if you remember from round three, there's a lot of work to do after we adopt the plan. By the regulation standard, that's March fifteenth, twenty twenty six. So as I said, what we've done so far is we adopted the one hundred and thirteen minutes as the perspective need and filed that with the dispute resolution program. So you can go to the next slide. And that was based on the DCA obligation. So I'm gonna go through how those were calculated, just so you have the background as to why we adopted that number. So the present need was really about facilities that are locking plumbing. Kitchen facility is more than fifty years old, overcrowded. Happily, the borough is in good shape. We don't have any substandard units that we know of that were registered in any of the census data. So that present need is zero. So the prospective need obligation is the one that we need to address. We're in region three. So the whole obligation is based on three counties in region three and three factors. One is developable land, household income, and then jobs and employment data. So go through how that's calculated. The region three prospective need, what starts off when you, when you say, you know, you look at it and you think there's a big obligation for a lot of the communities, and this is why. Because when you started, when the way the regulations started out, in order to calculate the base of the regional need, it essentially took all of the household growth during the round three period and multiplied it by forty percent. And for that number for region three, it's eleven thousand, six hundred and four. So the regulation said that eleven thousand, six hundred and four units had to be spread throughout the three counties of region three. Next slide. So it's that regional perspective need multiplied by municipal allocation factor. That factor is developed through equalized non-residential valuation factor, which is a proxy for jobs and employment, an income capacity factor, which is essentially evaluating how much higher income some communities are versus the lowest income community in the region, and then a land capacity factor, which determines how much available land a community might have to spread the units out over. So the equalized non-residential valuation factor was based on the value of non-residential development in the community during round three, which was nineteen ninety nine to twenty twenty three. So that non-residential growth value was essentially divided by the value of the overall region, and then you get your percentage from that. Scroll down one more. So for Burnsville, you can see the numbers. You got a point three six percent non-residential valuation factor. So of the total regions, development of non-residential growth, you have point three six percent. The income capacity factor is very convoluted, but essentially it's an average of two measures. One is the sum of the differences of the municipality's median income versus a household income of the floor, lowest median income community in the region, which is Perth Amboy. So a hundred dollars less than their median income. So you take Burnsville median income and subtract that median income, and you get a number. And then there's a sum of all the differences of those median incomes in the region. And those are weighted and multiplied by the number of housing units you have in your community. Don't, don't even try to figure it out, but there's a, there's a calculation for us. So median income in Burnsville is two hundred and twenty thousand, sixty dollars. You have twenty six hundred and eighty households. You have the Perth Amboy less than a hundred dollars, so you can scroll down. So the measure A is subtracting the Perth Amboy floor income less of. So and then the measure B is essentially that number multiplied by the number of units. And then those are averaged and weighted, you can keep going down, averaged and weighted. So you get two point four eight percent. Now, on both of those first two factors, those were really kind of set by the statute and how they were figured out. And they were also set on census data. And then for the equalized, you know, non-residential valuation is based on tax assessment data, DCA certificates of occupancy. So our review of that is there really wasn't the ability to present an alternative number to those two factors. Now, the next one, we felt like we could potentially, but I can explain to you why we did not for Burnsville. Take and scroll down. So DCA looked at all the land throughout the region and determined with various factors, environmental weighting based on state plan areas, et cetera, how much available land you had in the borough and how much you had in the region. They found nine point five eight acres. Now, we could have gone in and said some of those weren't realistic, or maybe they were wrong. But what it really did was when you multiplied it by the total acreage in the region, you came up with point oh nine percent, which is such a small, small number that even if we got rid of that whole land capacity factor, you only went down by four units. So we felt like the risk and reward of trying to challenge that number, present an alternate number, really wasn't there. If you had much higher land capacity and we were talking a hundred units difference, it might have been worth it to say, look, this land isn't really developable. And a lot of communities did that, and you might have heard about that. But in this case, because the number was so low already, even if it went to zero, it wouldn't make a big dent in your overall obligation. So you can scroll to the next one. So we had that eleven thousand, six hundred and four units of prospective need. You average all of those factors that we just discussed, you get point nine eight percent. And you multiply that by the number of units, and that's how you end up with your hundred and thirteen units. So on fourth round crediting and bonusing framework. So basically, we have the present need is zero, so we don't need to address that. Perspective need is a hundred and thirteen. We have a maximum twenty-five percent of permitted bonuses. So we assume that we're going to maximize our bonuses. We're gonna try to plan for twenty eight bonus credits, which would get us down to a net new unit requirement of eighty-five units. So within those, we have what's called like micro requirements. You know, fifty percent of all the units need to be family. A minimum twenty-five percent need to be rental. Fifty percent of the rental will need to be family rental. And then there's the income split overall of fifty fifty, low and moderate. And then of the low-income units, thirteen percent need to be very low income. One change we had in this round was the maximum number of age-restricted units. It was twenty-five percent in the last round, now it's thirty percent. So you can have a higher number of age-restricted units count towards your plan. But there's a maximum amount of age-restricted bonuses that go along with that, it's ten percent, which is three. So one of the things we're gonna be looking at for Burnsville now on the fourth round, and this probably makes complete sense to you, knowing, knowing the community as you do, that there's not a lot of vacant land, obviously. DCA came up with the ten acres, but the vacant land adjustment reduces your obligation based on the amount of vacant land. And this is something you do after the obligation is accepted, but during the planning process. So I just want to make you aware that this is something we're considering and a process that we'll go through as we develop the plan. So just for sake of tonight's discussion, even though DCA said there was ten acres, let's say we found, we went through the process and found twenty acres. The way a vacant land adjustment works is you take the vacant land that you find, you multiply it by an assumed density that would meet a inclusionary zone density. So for instance, ten units to the acre. So twenty times ten units to the acre would be two hundred units is your development capacity. And then you multiply that by twenty percent, which would be a set aside, and you come up with forty units. So forty units would actually be what your realistic development potential is based on the amount of land you have in the community. So that's something that we'll be looking at. With your one hundred and thirteen unit obligation and you subtract forty units from that, you have what's called an unmet need, that's the seventy-three units. That kind of gets put to the side. It's still there, but you don't necessarily have to address it or plan for it. And there is also a new regulation within these new standards is that twenty-five percent of your RDP must be met through redevelopment, twenty-five percent. So you address your RDP, so let's say it's forty, and we zone or we find ways to address the group homes, accessory apartments, whatever programs we come up with, we address the forty units. Then we're required to do another twenty-five percent as an overlay through redevelopment, which would be another two units. So that's something that we're looking at, I just want you to be aware of as a way that we're not really expecting to be able to address one hundred and thirteen units in the borough at this point. Next slide. So what are some of the mechanisms that we'll look, look for? Extension of expiring controls, so any existing units that are set to expire. So they get thirty-year control. So there may be some from prior rounds that are set to expire during the third round. Jock's really good at doing these, and he'll find those and he'll extend them, and we can get extensions for those. So you essentially get new credits for units already there, which is great. Existing properties that can be converted to special needs facilities and look for potential group homes. Non-residential properties that might redevelop. We look for if there's any transitional housing units in the community or group homes that were developed sort of during the round three process we didn't know about. If we find those, we can get credits for those. Potential new zoning, inclusionary or a hundred percent affordable, accessory dwelling units. And then again, we'll look for opportunities to maximize our bonuses, and I'll talk about. So the bonus credits for round four are different than round three. In round three, it was all about sort of the two-for-one rental unit. Round four, they changed all of the bonus credits, I think, to incentivize different types of units. So special needs get a two-for-one. But most of the other ones get changed to half a unit per credit. So for sale units that are developed with a nonprofit partner, for instance, getting half a bonus credit. Something within a half a mile of a transit facility, half a bonus credit. Age-restricted units, half a bonus credit. Units with three or more bedrooms above the minimum required. You can also get half a bonus credit for those. Next slide. Conversion of non-residential space to affordable. So if you had old office buildings or repositioning shopping centers, you can get half a bonus credit for those. Redevelopment gets half a bonus credit. The extension of controls gets half a bonus credit if they're rental units a hundred percent affordable. If you have a three percent of the project cost or contribution of land, gets one unit credit. So that would be two-for-one. Very low income, above the thirteen percent minimum, you get a half a bonus credit. And then market to affordable, you can also get one bonus credit. Those ones are tough. Obviously, the market is really hot right now. So next steps by June thirtieth is we're preparing the housing element and fair share plan. As I mentioned before, the special directive added some things that we have to do. We have to do site suitability analyses for every inclusionary zone or proposed development. We also do have to do concept plans for proposed development to show that it can work. And then we're supposed to come up with a creditworthiness of all existing units. Now, that one's a tough one, and one I hope we can do by March fifteenth and nine, two, thirty, because that means getting all the deeds for all existing units. So it's gonna take some time. And then we have to include within the appendices, as I said, all the ordinances and resolutions that implement the plan. And I'm hoping that that's draft ordinances and resolutions by the June thirtieth deadline. So we have to submit to the program. The plan needs to get reviewed by the special adjudicators, they're called this time, which is the special masters from last time, which are planners hired by the program to review our plans. And fair share housing center, the bigger, they got in there. And then everything, obviously, the housing element is adopted by the planning board, and then all the ordinances and resolutions are adopted by the council here, so.
Do they have the time limit on review of them?
Um, that's a good question. I, I, I don't think so. But since we have to have a final by March fifteenth, I would hope they would be doing it relatively quickly. Let's see, even more slides. So obviously, if the patients have not complied with the deadlines, there's loss of immunity from builder's remedy lawsuits, exclusionation zoning lawsuits, which leads to loss of authority of the overview zone, which is the standard. But it also coalesces with these deadlines that they put into place, which makes them more difficult and urgent to me. And that's, that's it. And I'm happy to take any questions.
And you know, there's, these deadlines are so close, and yet it's a ten-year program. You know, what, we have to do this so fast for something that's gonna extend over ten years, just.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Extremely extreme.
Seems extreme and somewhat unrealistic, but I mean, we're, here we are, you know. We're gonna do our best. I think that's why I just can't see that we can have adopted ordinances by June, you know, because we have to figure out what we're doing with our plan first. And then I can see drafting ordinances and resolutions and having drafts in there and then reviewed by the program and then potentially, you know, adopted after that. Especially if those comments, I mean, why should we go through and adopt everything and then get comments back just for change? So I'm hoping that's very good. I, I'm assuming that things might change. You just never know with this.
Every municipality has to have this in, and by June thirtieth, how can they review them in the time limit? We can't, honestly.
I mean, we have over three hundred municipalities participate in round three. So I assume it's gonna be at least that, or if not more. So that's, yeah, that's to actually review in detail. Yeah, I don't know how many. There weren't that many special masters in round three, there might have been twenty. So that's a lot.
Do we know how many they have now? There was a clue.
I don't know, I don't. I'm not sure. Yeah, of course. Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, Jessica, thanks for the presentation. Just one quick question. I saw one of the slides listed, the list of mechanisms, and one was called conversion of existing property into a special needs facility. Can you just describe a little more what a special needs facility is?
Hey. So that would be a facility, you just say, both people. They live in it essentially as a single-family residence, and each bedroom counts as an affordable unit. Most people living in group homes are typically on social security, so they count as very low in contrast. They usually are units that fit right in with the community. They operate like a single family. Caregivers that stay with them, but it's, it's kind of a low-impact unit, that's something to consider.
I have one right down in, in the line street, and they're the quietest neighbors.
Yeah, they really are.
Anybody know?
Yeah, thank you, that's very helpful. Question about the, so the other communities in region three, if they were to contest their numbers, so it sounds like we're not doing that, but there's like a, there's an eleven thousand. Uh so it sounds like we're not doing that, but there's like a a like there's an eleven thousand number that they came up with. So like, let's say a bunch of communities successfully challenge their numbers and they're able to lower their numbers. Does that impact our thirteen number or is our our?
It's a good question, I mean, I've heard some people speculate that the numbers would be redistributed, but I don't know how in all practicality that gets done. I'm hopeful that if we accept our number, that's it.
We accepted the one thirteen, in certain areas, that's what happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like if that eleven thousand then will somewhat get reduced, you know, some communities will successfully, you know, challenge it, so.
Communities that have really large vacant land, and it's just really looked at, a lot of them went for reduction.
How do they determine the district?
Their regions, and so that it's really, they just kind of slice across, three towns, there's no similarities, yeah. It is, it's the same reasons that COVID came out, we really had one, so they're just stuck.
Anybody else? That was great, and I think we get the telephone posted on the website.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Thank you so much. Oh, do we have a subcommittee yet, is that, I think?
Yes.
Okay, we do, okay. So we'll meet soon, yeah, okay.
Thanks, Jessica. Next, ah, we have a library, it's a new vision.
Yes, no, I just um, my presentation's gonna have a lot more pictures. Thank you for the opportunity to present our strategic plan update. This is the strategic plan we presented to you last February, with our year review data at the end, as well as the. Activity that we have in motion on our capital plan, that was our our goals of our strategic plan, so if you go to the next one. We have five big goals that were in our strategic plan, I'll do a few little updates on each of them. I'll show our bottom line for renovations and then you'll have time to answer that questions. So this is the strategic plan cover, um and to the next one, this this plan cover twenty-three to twenty-eight. Um and this is, you know, the, just to start, I, there's a lot of new faces here. The whole point of the library and I I think some people know this and some people don't, but I don't know if it might apply to. It's more than just books, right, we're a community, uh we have teens volunteering, we have seniors connecting, we have adults working from home from the library. We have babies learning to love learning and learning to read. We have their caregivers connecting with other people and learning how to raise their families, we're, we have a lot going on every day. Um and if you go to the next slide, we're trying to communicate that better about all the opportunities that everyone in our community has. Some of our communication initiatives are newer, but we're trying to amplify our resources and attendance. Um and get our services out there uh through social media, through our website, through our occasional printed matter, through. I've put some calendars uh or some brochures with our calendar coming up at your your chairs there. Uh so that people are fully aware of all the opportunities they have at the library. And a big part of this is amplify our collection, which is the next slide. We had a great year for circulation, we had over a hundred and fifty thousand serps. Um uh you'll see there, the left half is our youth and fiction and nonfiction for adults. And the upper right corner is our traffic between our other main libraries, we really get a lot of that consortium relationship that we have with Maine. And also through the state library, we have interlibrary loans, and if we have to, we go outside of New Jersey to to fulfill interlibrary loans. And the bottom right corner is um our electronic circulation, I'll always notice there is our electronic magazines. But we have this growing and growing sector of ebook demands, e audiobook demands, newspapers, magazines. It's the way of the world and it's thriving and we're we're doing our best to support throughout the community. Um, I'm gonna go to the next slide. Yeah.
Based on that number of a hundred and fifty thousand to the circulations, other communities that are similar to our size and is that?
That's a good question, we're we're a very active library, we also have like a lot of other people throughout Maine come to our unit library because they like it a little better than their home library nearby or what have you. Um for our size, you can look at our size by the size of our town, you can look at it by the size of our budget, you can look at a lot of factors. We're a very active library, we used to be a blue star or gold star or something star library. Um but we're we're still doing very, very well. Uh our peers in region twelve nationally go all over the country, we have comparable circulation and you'll see later that we have. Hugely better programming and that programming helped drive the circulation and helped drive our attendance, so I I have to get you more information about that. But we're doing well. And we're we're doing just about as well as we we have over the past year in circulation. Um if you go to the next slide, we have some challenges in circulation. Um we've had some new initiatives, we've offered online newspapers, we've cooperated with Maine, the rest of Maine has onboarded to the Wall Street Journal, so we got a little money back. And now we get a better price through the consortia, uh we offer New York Times online, not everybody in Maine does that. Um we've sort of worked the toggle on hoopla and and Libby, our ebook vendors and ebook platforms. So that we can try to meet the needs of all the holds. Uh we've also tried to rein in the costs there, so we we limit your hoopla checkouts. But it's to the point where everybody's pretty much getting what they want in a reasonable amount of time for hoopla instead of having to log on on Sunday night at midnight. So the next round of funding opens up during the week. Um we've been an early doctor of the Palace Project in the state of New Jersey, that's still an emerging thing, but we were pioneering the way with getting all of our living content. And then bonus content from the state library and the Palace Project app. We've just added Comics Plus, which is graphic novels and comics, this is huge for kids aged kindergarten through twelfth grade especially. Um especially the middle school age, it keeps gets engaged in reading and it's um it offers. Higher vocabulary and building into it, it's useful to the schools, they're excited that we've onboarded Comics Plus. Because the visual cues make it easier to handle more complex themes and more complex vocabulary. Uh we're working with the Talking Braille Center to help people who need large print or who need audiobooks and the specialized players and titles that they have through the the Talking Book and Braille Center in Trenton. And we get a lot of support from our friends, our friends support a huge part of our electronic uh materials, they support just about all of our large print program. They're they're great buddies, um and the foundation, of course, supports us overall very well, so we we get a lot of support from throughout the community to do this. We've had some supply chain challenges lately, um our main book vendor, the main book vendor for New Jersey that's on state contract is uh having some challenges fulfilling the books. They're having some challenges at publisher level, getting the books to the book vendor. We're working through it, we're we're shopping another vendor and we're we're getting there. Um another big challenge is ebooks cost more and more and more money, every day that goes by, they just know there's a demand and they they hold you and they have to get you. Um a a book that's a hardcover that might cost you in a bookstore thirty dollars, the paper book will cost me something like seventeen dollars with all of our discounts. Another dollar or two to put the plastic cover on it and put stickers on it and all that. So that same book in an ebook um could be fifty-four dollars and we can only circulate it twenty-four times and it'll disappear in twenty-four times or two years. If it's an e audiobook, it might cost ninety-four dollars, same thing twenty-four times and disappear in two years. So we try to balance, you know, encouraging people to use some resources over others. And we get deals in different ways that we we try to drive our clients to those. Um but at the same time, meeting everybody's needs for the bestsellers and for the what's in demand, we try not to let people wait too long. But it's it's a constant balance that the circulation manager or or almost navigating. Um where there are also fewer and fewer, did you have your hand up wrong?
I was gonna say, just real quick, Palace Projects, is that the one where they archive the um newspaper and and stuff from like the last couple of years?
Yes, we get the we have the Barnesville News, and that's through partnership with the local history, those um volunteers are there every Tuesday and Thursday. And they um also archive additional materials like photographs and genealogical records, marriage records, death certificates, that kind of.
We're tasked with doing local archive, is that how it is?
Barnesville News online, but then we have additional content that we supply. Yeah, no, we have very little of the period resources and we, we're constantly striving with a lot of volunteers to make it even better. Um, yeah.
Look on the ebooks, I think a lot of people will surprise that the ebook is more expensive than the hardcover, but. To buy a book, it's always like, you know, twenty bucks for the book, but if I get it through whatever Kindle or something, it's like five bucks.
Right.
So why is it the flip in this area?
There are limitations in platforms and like, we do have books that are five dollars. And we have books that we can turn on, like it's twelve cough for circulation, but there might be a bestseller that it's ninety-four dollars to buy it. But if you turn on cost per circulation, it's only four dollars per circulation, but then you risk forty people circulating in.
Okay.
Um and it's, it has to do with publisher battles, publishers versus, you know, it. It's because we have plenty of people who's newly gifts that if not, all the users.
Essentially licensing it and it could be.
Yeah, intellectual property.
Yeah.
Stuff that's beyond my pay grade, that um we're getting them for the best price that is possible always, but there are limitations with uh different platforms. So go to the next slide. We also have, um, oh, this is our electronic circulation, you can see this is from twenty twenty-one. A little dot for each year in between and um it's just how people are increasingly choosing to read. So we of course have increasing circulation, um we have a variety of titles, not all of them are ninety-four dollars a book. Uh but a lot of them, when they first come off, the press is hot, that's why you might have to wait a little while, they are. Um go to the next slide. Thank you, Anthony. Um programming is another key thing that keeps people coming in the library, it's something that makes them satisfied with their community. Um that we have all these opportunities, we have a lot of adult programming choices that would optimize an attitude over these past two years. We're trying to serve our underserved communities that are, we have an ESL class, we partnered with the county of Somerset to do that, they give us the teacher, um it's been a wonderful program. Um we have great youth engagement, we have, you know, forty people at times want to go to Storytime last year and we're just starting it up again. Katie Bruce started our first Storytimes again today, yeah. So people are signing up for them, we have a registration tool which works much better, it's affordable. Um and we have a volunteer program, the teens don't always want to come to Google Library Program, but they're very interested in volunteering, they shell their books, they. Do our bulletin boards and they really want to read to the little kids, it's adorable, like that that's their number one thing that they want to do, that we have some, have you want to serve the library? They want to read to small children, so we set that up. Um and we have a lot of partnerships, but we've partnered with REC to bring Storytime to the pool and to the Quonix Park, we've partnered with the Sterling Stables. All across the county, we're trying to to form partnerships. And we're trying to serve every segment of society, we want everyone to be able to get something great out of the library and we feel like we're doing that, if you go to the next slide. You can see, this is some of the national benchmark data in the second column, our peers in twenty twenty-one, and we only have twenty twenty-one data, that's the most recent. That's how many programs they did, we did a bit more, we did about forty percent more. And then the next year we did even more, in two thousand and three, twenty-three was about the same as two thousand and twenty-two. And last year, we did great, we offered tons of choices. And that translated, and if you you can skip two slides, we have some pretty pictures of some programs, there's some regional kids, there's Officer Ten. And this has been the number of programs that we've offered, it's just blind and climbed. And people are very satisfied with it. Um and you'll see our attendance, I have at the end of the presentation, which we're getting close to, um that is also plum. It's not just like we're offering things and no one's coming, people are are coming very, very happy too. So getting into our facility, that's been our other big, big, big goal that has been really worked this year, we did a capital plan, we revised the capital plan already, we brought in space planners. So we have been trying to um make the most of what we have. Bring it up to current standards and make it even better, we want to be a shining star in this community. So if you go to the next slide, our our plans to remedy. Oh, this is our facility capital plan, let me follow this. Um we gutted, replaced and repaired the restrooms that were leaking and that were a disaster. That's completed and finished, we're very excited about that. Our facility plan also filtered through parking, that's kind of under your all hands. Um I know you're working on it and that we we hope to to improve that, we're also doing things on our end to space out the stories and things of the business into the backup there. Um we had twenty-five year olds furniture, we have to repaint, all that stuff. And including, and we have wasteful aged lighting, we have lighting that has ballasts and bulbs, ballasts you can no longer get, we're, you know. Constantly trying to nurse some of those lighting fixtures along. We also want to improve our technology and connectivity, that's something that's more in the back of the house that you don't really see going on, but we have firewalls we have to maintain. We have wifi that was brought up last week from ninety megabits a second, I'm using a right unit, to well over six hundred. Um so we have wifi that reaches more users at one time, that is stronger and that um is faster for those users. So we've used a space planner though to add more meeting spaces, that's something everybody's been talking for, everybody talks about our one little meeting room. People want more places to zoom, to meet, to conference, we have little mountains across town, the garden of the um farmer's market, the book clubs, everybody needs meeting spaces. We're trying to reuse all of our shelving, um and we've we've done that pretty successfully, uh because it's expensive and just focus our budget on where you're facing. We're replacing carpet, paint, replacing broken carrels, awkward tables so that tutors have a place to sit and work, we have a lot of tutors. A lot of other libraries don't allow tutoring, we do, um and that has a need there that in that after school market. We're replacing the hex, those hex in our desktop house. And we're adding lounge and tutor areas. And the big thing that like might be most visible in this is we're working on a really magical children's area. So if you go to the next slide, this shows some of our, the blue is new and the red is reused, you can see all of the shelving. And a lot of our circulation has circulation, this is cost of fortune, there's a lot of things that we are working very hard to be as thrifty and economical. And spending our budget on the places where it will matter most. So if you go down a little further, this is the aerial view on the left of our meeting pods that are going in, it's a structure you'll see more soon, but it um. Allows for two, three room, three, two, three person rooms and one six person room. We're adding some lounge and charging center and rotunda. And in the far south wing, we'll have these benches with laptop pods that you can plug into and you can work and work from home or to your grab school, whatever is you're doing. If you go down a little further, this is what the last pod will kind of look like, it's a it's a basic rendering of it. Um clear on all sides for our little birds, keep them a little uncomfortable. But also, so staff knows that there's people in the building, so they know that, you know, privacy is something that you want, not too much of in the library, good enough. Um this will go, we've had to shrink some of our collection um to make room for these meeting rooms. But there was a lot of empty shelf space, we didn't use the bottom shelf and a lot of nonfiction, a lot of fiction, we're compacting things to make room for what the community really wants. If you go down another one, this is our teen and tween areas, um computer desks for them, places for them to gather and do their group projects. To linger to read, to find things they're excited about learning about. Then go down a little further, this is the beginning of our children's stuff. Um we're going for science museum, not Chuck E. Cheese, but we're looking for play areas. Um people want places to be with their kids, they want furniture where they can sit down next to their child and read. Um and they want a place where they can learn and meet other families and other caregivers and connect and have the children connect and learn. Uh if you go down a little further, this is the big seating area around the big activity table that everyone will gather at. Um it has bookshelves behind us and that's where a lot of adult fiction is right now. So rather than having the children area squeezed into that elbow between fiction and the main entrance of the library. We're giving the children's area the wing and removing the children's stuff to become teen and tweens. Um if you go a little further, this is using an existing Lego area I have that'll be an early childhood lingering spot. Um the Legos and trains and the plastic big ones. And if you go down a little further, that's the aerial version of what it'll look like, you can see those two big birds in the upper right corner where those lounge areas are. The green splotches are tree displays, they're um they're sort of like woodland forest nature theme that fits well with our town and our region and the shaped your commission and all that. Um, that's what it's gonna look like. And to engage your community further, if you go down a little further, you see that the the community relies on a good space. And they rely on good programming to really come into the library, make the most of our collection, make the most of their space. Uh that's our staff on the right, they make all of this happen, they're really an A-team and they have blown our ear. And they have blown our year statistics out a little earlier this year. Uh, if you go down to the next slide. This is our program attendance. Um, the, all those programs have resulted in all of these people coming to the library. Um. The top line is children and of course we expect more people to attend the children's program that's the children and the caregivers. And the bottom line is adults, all of which have increased dramatically and have been very successful. So if you go down again. That's our memoirs club that's going, I think, twenty years now. Um, they have memoirs and coffee. Uh, they have, they get a good turnout. Some of them are still the original members. We have teens that volunteer. That's our summer reading. Um, the patio, when the community room got flooded, we had stories out there. It's blessed. But we just kept making it happen and they, they did great. And that drove, if you go to the next slide. Our daily, oh, this is our program attendance. Did that, did that, keep going. There it is. Our daily attendance. Um, our daily attendance over the past two years just keeps climbing. This is more than seven percent growth in one year. And compared to other libraries, compared to regional libraries. Um, I don't know that this kind of growth is sustainable, but that means we have lots of people coming in the door for. Happy and our library sustaining its services and thriving. So if you go down on again. This is the number of new card users. We've had over four hundred people sign up for new library cards. We already have a lot of library card users, but it's a big thing. You come to town, you get your library card. And you start using all your great electronics. It's a little bit of a means of. If you keep going.
And Fred, if, if you work in town, you can also get a library.
Anyone who works in town can get a library card. Anyone who goes to school in town, you know, it's a little here. Yeah. Um, to the staff needing middle. Some people work part of the, you don't have to be a teacher, you just have to work in town. Everybody can get a library card. Some of the things we're trying to do in two thousand and twenty-five, we're trying to offer more couples Storytime, so that they're not quite so overloaded before you're fifteen, people trying to be at the same one. Uh, trying to restore our pre-COVID evening hours. Right now, we close at five on Thursday. We'd like to stay until nine. Right now, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we close at eight. We'd like to stay until nine. We're free for the hours. And we're awkwardly speaking people out of the building at each of those times throughout the week. Um, so that's one of our goals. And another big one is this library interior renovation. And we're celebrating twenty-five years at our one Andersonville Road location. If you go down to the next slide, this is the, the bottom line stuff. Why does this cost so much money? It just all costs a lot of money. We have gotten the best progress we can through the New Jersey contract and the educational cooperative that we belong to. Um, it's a lot of carpet. We have a second two thousand square foot facility. It's done at prevailing wage. There's installation costs. It has to be carpet that's gonna last another twenty-five years. The painting costs a lot. Um, we're not getting new light fixtures again for economy. It might be prettier or more fun to have new light fixtures. We're just getting one, but we can change it once. That's what we call, um, and hopefully lower our energy costs. Um, the ADA compliance door, we have one on the exterior door, but then there's another set of doors when you come to the library. Which are constantly open, which means we have no wind to break. Our HVAC bills are horrendous. It's a big golden space, of course, they're horrendous, but we hope that by having now a button that will. Let the interior door open and close, that we'll be able to leave them closed and keep some of the wind out and some of the bees out and some of the heat out. Throughout the year to um, just function better, take more load off of our air handling units, which are constantly bussy. Um, the meeting room structure and its installation and application is expensive. Um, but it's adding a lot of flexibility to our space and meeting the demand that was brought out in the strategic planning process from surveys and focus groups. And with expert advice from the space planners. Um. Most of this is being funded by two specific requests. One that was left to the library board, library board, and one that was left to the friends. That's the Maria Rena Estate and the Blue and Shine Fund. Both of those are totaling. Quite some bit of money. I don't have my glasses on. I have to either be able to read my paper for the board. But it's, it's well over ninety percent of this project is being funded by these gifts. So if you go on to the last, this is where you guys get to ask questions. If you have any about our renovation, or purposes are, or if you want a further thought, sometimes we have some people. Come visit the library and I give them a little walk around and try to explain to them the funding works, your little operations or anything that's related to it. Thank you. Thank you, Fred.
I was just gonna say, the community rooms can stay like multi-purpose, I guess.
Yes, we have, we're great. It's wonderful that we can divide our community and have so we can ESL run it one by one. We can have nothing named as painting and. Painting with balloons, I think they did today. Um, we have different programs going on both sides all the time and sometimes we open the bullpen for, um. Larger programs. We were able to get the carpet in there replaced and the painting redone last year when there was a flood. From one of those toilets that took out the community every year. Doing a current process, we're rebuilding it and replacing those, so they're not like, that's the carpet you jump. The paint. And whatever it is. This way from here.
Fred, would you like to introduce your board members that are over here?
Yeah. This is Nancy Purdue. She's president of the friend, so vice president of the library. This is John Vertempi. He is president of the library for quite a few years now. We have John Contaski, he's the fourth of us here in the whole state. And Justin is from the Library Foundation. They do a wonderful job of supporting us through a grant every year for our operating.
Yeah. I have to say, um, with our senior group, you know, we've been trying through the mayor's wellness to reach out more to seniors and I, we did a survey of them last year during the centennial. And their number one place for learning, recreation, whatever, they all check the library. So you get a, a really good support from our senior community because there's, you know, we don't have our own senior center.
Yeah.
And you've kind of become that. Well, that's great.
They love playing mahjong. They love coming to talk. So they'll be, they, they do a lot of our gardening and the entry, the, the garden club is a lot of senior volunteers. Um. We don't have a senior club. That's why we asked the senior constituents, like, well, they're for any of them.
Yeah. We're just seeing your senior.
Okay.
It's on the list.
We didn't need to surprise you at your first meeting of the library board.
Yeah.
When it happened. It wasn't our, it wasn't our intent.
No.
But uh, it's been quite a process. A lot of friends have executed fabulously. Um, we're looking forward to. And finally spending some of our patrons, you know, and uh, bequests that have. Being even to us, most cherished by me.
Yeah, people have been calling for iterations of a renovation. Every six years or so since the library was built. Um. But it was really clear in the strategic planning process that people are ready for things to change up a little bit. And that's why we came with a capital plan. Consulted professionals, we consulted the community. Um.
Yeah, I was gonna answer that. That's some of your committees that you're on. Which were, you were up to some of that, I thought I was on the communication part.
Yeah, you're on the facility, running your own community. Our full space.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's good. It was a good experience. Um, how, in terms of timing, will the library be closed at any time? Uh, parts of it closed at different times?
Well, we intend to fully keep open throughout all of this, a mini library in the community room. So we're gonna have the new books in the community room. We'll have a few computer stations like they did during COVID. And we'll hopefully have some programming continuing in half of the community room. So like ESL needs a place to meet. Our tax preparers need a place to meet. I'm worried about tax volunteers operating the library. Um. We do anticipate, and this is, I'm still working with the, the creative library concepts that is wrangling all of these vendors. Um, we'll have some painting going on within the library and carpeting and we'll be sections that close off at different times uh, throughout. Late March into late April. And then it's being pushed. It was supposed to start right after spring break for the schools. It might start in May. There's gonna be about two weeks where most of the library is gonna be inaccessible. And staff will be working to either shift things in the library or they will be certain things, the mini library, checking people in and out. Um, and we have some, if we run out of things to do, we have some archiving work to do for the local history room. So we'll, we intend to keep it there. We also want to do some outreach with our youth services staff then to the local three schools and we. Go out and do Storytime to them. Cool. So we'll be busy. Yep.
The uh, archive, I don't know if you've ever been in the history room, but it, it is amazing what they have in there. And um, that's where we got great stuff for the centennial from them. And they will do a, a history of their home. You wanna know, right?
Yeah. They also have, they found in a corner, um. Edward Spinning, who donated most of the local history room initially when the library was opening. He um, was the engineer for the cross-country train trips for President Theodore Roosevelt. There were two cross-country train trips. And we have these interesting maps that no one else has and menus of the weird things day in nineteen. And um, one of them is signed, but it's, so they're getting preserved and framed. Actually, we're getting it preserved and then we're framing that with our media. So there's, there's a lot of neat stuff in them.
That's great. Well, thank you. Anybody else, I don't, just wanna say, Fran, you've done a fabulous job with the library over the past couple of years. And then he's handsome, you can cut it up, the interview process there, so, well done. Yes, thank you. Look forward to soon. You don't have to say it for the rest of you.
I don't worry.
Wonderful, thank you.
Long as you vote for the roof, I'm happy.
Next is approval of minutes. We have session sixteen, one twenty-four, and then we get to our even third, we get to seven. I'll second. On fair.
I want to say.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, we're good. Thank you. Um. We now have an open session for any items that are not listed for a public hearing. If anyone in the public or on Zoom would like to speak, um, there's a silver X over here. There's some CDX there on Facebook. Now, when you're on camera.
Very good. Good evening. My name is Pete Kiley. I'm the president chief of the Burnsville Fire Company and First Aid Squad. And I'm here to speak on it to be had. I would like to start by thanking Mayor Knoes, Administrator Nancy Malul, and all the members of the Borough Council to their help and support over the years. Burnsville Fire Company is an all-volunteer combination fire and first aid company. It's been an existence for over a hundred and twenty-five years. In twenty twenty-four, we responded to approximately three hundred and ninety-five fire calls, including five structural fires in town. Numerate alarm activations, carbon dioxide alarms, wired down, brush fires and car accidents. And an overturned gasoline tanker carrying seven thousand five hundred gallon get through. Which landed on top of two passenger cars and was leaking fuel. In addition to the fire calls, our first aid squad has responded to hundreds of calls with medical assistance in twenty twenty-four. Since I was a young kid, I dreamed about becoming a volunteer firefighter with my father, my uncle and my grandfather. I joined the Burnsville Fire Company when I turned sixteen years old. Never did I think that someday I would be chief. I honestly had no interest in becoming chief, no desire to have the responsibility for the safety of these men and women. Volunteers who run towards the danger. However, it was the path that was chosen for me. I am proud that our members have put that ultimate truck in me. I love the Burnsville Fire, I love being a Burnsville firefighter. Due to the very nature of our business, we put public safety as well as the safety of our volunteers. And the public at the forefront of our mission. We very much appreciate all the support that the borough has given us over the years. And we appreciate the partial support for our mandated emergency radio upgrades. We look forward to continuing our conversations regarding a much-needed, much overdue new ambulance. Whose funding has apparently been put on hold for the time being. During the past few years, the number of emergency calls have increased while the number of volunteer members has decreased. The number of hours required for training has and will only continue to increase. As will the cost to operate. However, the amount of income donations that we receive seems to decrease. I, along with all the members of the Burnsville Fire Company and First Aid Squad, are looking forward to working and collaborating with you. While being fiscally responsible towards our endless mission of public safety. I invite each one of you, along with all members of the public, to reach out to me should you have any questions. Any interest in joining our organization or would simply like a tour of the firehouse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave.
John Donnie, sixteen, south here. So I walked my dog the other day and her way back when, we got a bunch of money to do the Boyland Tariff Connector. We have one, like one hundred million dollars that I'm memory serves.
One point four.
One point four, and I realized probably we have a lot of engineering hurdles we had to get through and probably cost about four million dollars now. Is there a chance we could get that money and apply it to something similar just to be able to use it versus having it expanded already and crammed?
I wish it was that easy.
Because there'd be, you boil it now, one point four is probably a four, four million dollar job, but. Yeah, sidewalks, you know, sort of like kind, like kind exchange, if you will. That was possible, I just thought I'd put it out there for the universe, maybe something would happen.
I think we're still looking at doing the walkway and you're right, it, um, there were. Things that I don't wanna say in public that went along with it. Um. The Department of Transportation has the funding. It went immediately from the federal government to the state. The nu, the amount of paperwork and qualifications and.
It's less than the law.
It's less.
It's less than the laws.
Yes, uh, I was, it, it was really, there's so much to do that we're kind of looking at. Rethinking how we fund this, cause we, you know, the neighborhood needs it, um, the neighborhood wants it. I think it's a great project for. The whole community, um, and for the businesses as well as the residents. It's just figuring out how we get it done.
Yeah, I agree with that much, but I didn't know if it was, you know, if you can't do it just because the economics will work anymore. Could be, at least take the money and, you know, get those amenities just somewhere else.
Unfortunately, they won't let us.
And I think we do have a sidewalk project. So, um, the sidewalk and road repairment is born and that is supposed to be awarded by June. We gotta extend until June. Um, we had to change the path. So instead of going straight down, um. West. West. It goes down west and makes a ramp, our prospect, which I think already had a sidewalk and then a left on center. Then to go on that, because the other way, there was so, there were so many problems with it. So. That, I believe is supposed to be awarded, the bit awarded by.
Maybe new sidewalks done that way or?
New sidewalks. So Prospect already has them. I think they're okay. Center has some, but um, they would have re-redone, I think. So, um. And then the, the street wise, I think west has, doesn't have. So west would have, it's also an adult thing needed to be fixed, but then um. Center would have, would have, replaced and extended. And then it will end at Boyland and then phase two would be the. Way down at the train station, however it happened. And um, unfortunately that uh, federal grant's very specific. And the, the problem that we talked about a few months ago. Is in order, is part of the reason why we changed the route. The sidewalk that was gonna go along border and terrace. Needed to have a chain wall on the other side to hold up the side of the hill, the side of it would be supported. Um, it was designed and then DOT said the wall wasn't big enough and the size they wanted to make it. It's not possible, like the economic, you know, these are the, so we had to change the route and then. What we have, yeah, the total wall for changing the way down and changing.
It, it didn't work. We won't get that done. Anyone, anybody else? In the public. And, you know, I just wanna say, Keith, this John turned up so fair. Uh, we very much appreciate what you do. I mean, we, we as well are volunteers, so we know what that entails in the manner of time. And all the training requirements that you have to go through and, you know, I look forward to, congratulations on being chief. And I think we look forward to opening the community, getting things worked out, that maybe. You can get what you need and we can.
As you have, as the public safety chair, I do have it on for our next. As you have, as the public safety chair, I do have it on for our next agenda to discuss what can be done. I know that there's some mutations with a bit of things which I replied to, you know, but it is on our calendar. We should have done it in February, but we didn't because the chief was ill when that happened. So next meeting, we will know. Something we'll reply to.
We have someone online.
Oh, okay.
Carolyn Duff.
Hi. Hi. Carolyn Duff, Crestview Drive in Burnsville, New Jersey. I just, just a quick comment to just voice my support for the library. I'm very excited about the new plan. We're lucky to have, you know, so much town support for the library, which is obviously so crucial. I'm very excited to see the possibility of extended hours because obviously we're doing this wonderful redesign of the library, but of course we want to make sure that everyone is able to utilize that, you know, particularly on Thursday nights. It's a great place. I hang out there a lot with my kids, my little ones right here. You know, I, I work sometimes from the library, have meetings at the library. It's, you know, beyond also just taking out a ton of books all the time. It is such a vital part of the community, and we're so lucky in Burnsville to have it. We're lucky to have Fran. I don't know if she's still in the audience, but we are just so lucky to have like such a great staff at the library and just really, you know, it's, it's just a great resource. Like Fran said, it's not just about reading books. It's, it's about a whole community center and a place for people to gather. So, thanks.
Thank you. And Fran is still here, so she heard. Anyone else? We're good? All right, then I will close the public session. And I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five, twenty fourteen, and ordinance repealing ordinance twenty twenty-four two thousand and eleven entitled ordinance vacating a portion of Burnsville adjacent to Block one fourteen, one. And this is on a recommendation of our engineer, yes? Anyone want to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Rich, why don't you add that?
The approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five, twenty fourteen.
Include the whole entire area.
And ordinance repealing ordinance twenty twenty-three. What's that? Oh. My ears. For the twenty twenty year, I pass it on. Twenty twenty-five, that's twenty fourteen, on final read, the dot S point.
I'm pretty welcome, of course.
Mr. Creed?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Barr? Mr. Vetrino? This veteran?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, we have ordinance is to introduce Christine.
Entering sewer necking, sewer experience, an allocation and amendment chapter sixteen of the Borough Code entitled Sewer Regulations being introduced by title passed on first reading published according to law that a public hearing be scheduled for meeting beginning at seven P M. Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
A second. All in favor, ready discussion, if you want to vote? If we talked about it for last week, so all in favor?
Aye.
I heard you.
I had the old, by the way, I had the old, I had one last week. I was confused. I was like, how did I know this? You're so good at it.
Downward. Let's go to introduce the next one.
I move the ordinance twenty twenty-five, twenty sixteen, calendar year twenty twenty-five, ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a half bank, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law. And a public hearing be scheduled for immediately beginning at seven P M. Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Jamie, with the rules?
I move that ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty seventeen, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of new radios produced by the Fire Company of the Borough of Burnsville in the county of Somerset, New Jersey, appropriate to two hundred and fifty thousand. Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred bonds or notes of the borough for financing such appropriation. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, that a public hearing be scheduled for meeting beginning seven P M. Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I have a second.
Discussion? And I can just say, I know there have been some questions as to what the actual costs are going to be, which I don't know if Jack, if we were to have to change the number, is that a substantial change?
Yes, yes, we do have to.
So we need a public hearing on your, your. And since these, I know are, take a long time to get, we should move forward with this, but if there's a change, maybe there's a, we can use a secondary funding source? Could we do that, like use some, part of capital?
We have to do another ordinance, appropriate capital, an additional.
An additional amount.
While we're talking about our finance, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, I think obviously because of the timing that we discussed, because it takes so long to get the radio, I mean, as it is, this ordinance is not going to be able to use until I think it's like April twentieth or something, in the middle of April, because maybe a little earlier than that. Second reading will be marked on the fourth, and then over twenty days after that is, so maybe that's the fourteenth. Anyway, that, there's twenty days left here, so that is the time that we can come between them.
So let me ask a question. What do you think? When we, if we're introducing it, can we change the number now?
Yes, you can, you can change the number on.
I mean, that doesn't mean we have to spend it all if they come in less.
That's correct, and you can introduce it by title, so the, the numbers would be in title, and then you find.
Because I think you mentioned there were two more radios we haven't counted. So if we were to change this to three hundred, doesn't mean we're going to spend three hundred if the numbers come in less, but it's easier to go backwards than to go forward.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
In other words, better off going higher and then coming down underneath, right? Right.
Okay, so. Change to three hundred, running as, as in two thousand? Oh, yeah, is the two thirty-seven five need to change also?
Yes, if you appropriate three hundred thousand dollars, you'd be implementing two hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred dollars in lines of use.
Yeah. Back and redo the ordinance.
Five percent, we're just, we're talking, five percent down paying, it would be a mountain. Far, but it poses a total obligation, so that's right.
Okay, got it. All right, so we introduce, I'm going to say the pain.
You should reintroduce it with that.
I move that ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty seventeen, bond ordinance providing the acquisition of new radios produced by the Fire of the Borough of Burnsville in the county of Somerset, New Jersey, appropriating three hundred thousand. Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred dollars for bonds or notes of the borough for financing such appropriation. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing be scheduled for meeting beginning at seven P M. Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Now, I second?
Yes. And Al, are you good with this? I didn't hear if you had said something.
Yep, no, that, it all makes sense to me. I just had that one question. Clarifying what we were doing, but it makes complete sense.
Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, we can never do bonds.
The bonds.
I don't want to see any of you guys stand up there. You might just, we really have too many meetings. But thank you from the Fire Department for your consideration.
Under pressure, yes, thank you. So now we have resolutions, twenty ten thirty-nine to twenty-five forty-nine. We added a couple from our last meeting because we do have a new person. If you know Isabel, who is the tax clerk, clerk at here, yeah, who's in the file office when you come in, you know Isabel. She has a reason to take this position, so, yeah. So they added down one. The bond anticipations. Yeah. The rest, I think, we're all saying that we have to, so. Want to move it?
I move that resolutions twenty-five dash thirty-nine to twenty-five dash forty-nine be adopted.
Do we need to explain forty-six for you, or do we?
Mr. Barr? Mr. Barr? Mr. Trainer?
Yes, Mr. Ruby? Yeah.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Oh, mayor update. One minute. It's so long since we. January thirty-first, I attended my first when we did the League of Municipalities Legislative Committee meeting. I am on the Finance and Tax Committee. It was interesting because what each committee does is we review any proposed legislation and decide whether the league is going to support it or not. On the first of February, I had another wedding. I forgot what's counting. I think that was seventeen. I don't know. And then we had the mini golf.
I missed it.
Yeah.
I could insult.
Really? It was really, they do a great fundraiser with that program. It was, I can't believe they sold out. On the third of February, Congressman Kane was at the library. They had a congressional app challenge. This is fascinating. High school, and I think they were sophomore even, they created app and submitted, and then they are given recognition and awards. And we had one of our VHS students, Tiaria Tiyadi was an honorable mention. So Congressman Kane was here to give him that award. And they each had to do a video presentation of how their app worked and what resources they used and what programming. Just, it was really impressive. I did finally find, we did find a roof where they give us an estimate on the train station roof. Hundred and thirty-eight thousand. It didn't, it was bad because there's asbestos in it, so that becomes a major critique. Since the roof is the responsibility of New Jersey Transit, we've wanted to kind of help the process along by giving them an estimate and giving them the proposal from N B and try and show them that this is going to help their ownership and they need to do it. So we'll see how far we get with that. Main Street, I attended their program. They had Kathy Gutman from the New Jersey E V A come and do a presentation on all the grants that are available for small businesses, which they're pretty impressive. So I think the people that were there were all signing up, and that was Joe Oswald, I guess, so. We had a wellness committee meeting. I attended a program by the Somerset County Business Partnership, because we're members of that, that is on Women's Party Health. I attended the YMCA campaign kickoff event, which they're already past their fifty percent mark. I attended the State of the County Breakfast, sponsored again by the Business Partnership, which is really interesting because they had the Chief Financial Officer of Unity Bank talking about, I don't know, how the economy is going in Somerset County. The county administrator, Colin Mark. Bridgewater Commons General Manager, Nintendo was interesting, that they're really investing a lot more into that wall than they're keeping it a wall. I thought it was going to be changed, but it is not. And then the River Valley Community College President, Mike McDonough. And they are adding a lot to that college, so they're adding a lot more business training, business development. We had a meeting with the Farmers Market Committee, and it, I think, we're going with well, those of you who know Madeline English took over, have been, and she's pretty much done with it. So Recreation will be taking over most of the administrative work, and then the committee will be doing the actual volunteering at it on Saturdays. Then it did another wedding, that was the bin nineteen. And our Somerset Hill Public Safety Committee, we meet about every three weeks. Bridgewater is doing this program where they have, it's, it's a drone for the police. So as soon as they get a nine-one-one call, the drone goes out to check out, you know, what's happening and report back, so they know, it isn't offensive, I know, it's the coolest thing. Hundred grand for each drone. But Bridgewater is having a demo of this particular one. But Baskin Ridge also, they have a drone, and one of their officers is a trained pilot, so they are doing, you know, kind of their own thing. This one that Bridgewater is doing is available twenty-four seven. If you have a big one trying to pilot it. When the pilot is available. But, you know, what a great idea. They had a PowerPoint they were showing how much more effective it is before they even got to the scene, they could tell that it had de-escalated, or it wasn't what they originally thought it was. It was really or they knew, you know, they could tell what to break, because, oh, you know, we're the needed ambulance, this, this, and it's the new, the new technology. So something to think about. I also wanted to mention, I don't think, did we receive anything, is the old ten?
No, we talked about that one, that's only.
Didn't we?
Yeah.
It's this January twenty-third.
It came out last year, too. It's about ten, right?
Well, this is for this year. That they, when they, not they exceeded.
Yeah, I thought it was the other.
No, I think they do it every year.
No, I mean, I thought I can't, that's the fall.
Yeah, it says it was calculated from January twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first.
Right.
Anyway.
Yeah.
All right, that's it for me. You guys?
We are good, Dan?
Say what? They get them to comply with those state statutes, and we end up at not just a hundred percent, but a hundred and, and that's some tiny.
One oh nine.
Right. Yeah, so they go above and beyond what is required by law. So I think that's pretty impressive for a small town like us to have that, that level of.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a great tip, yeah.
Okay, now you're.
Okay. I just have to report a couple of things to you coming back on our conference soon. Last week, I was meant to begin. The parking lots, lights were installed in the whole parking lot, seven lanes. They, I think, were officially turned on on Monday or Tuesday. They are, they have sensors, so they mod that desk. They're set the most out of timer, so they go off like, say, five hours later. They didn't tell the timer, but it said, oh, the entire room. So then they're walking. You know, it, it varies.
Nobody's called to complain yet that they're on some way.
No, no, so they're definitely on, I witness the mean, yeah, so that, so like, if, if it gets started five, they would go off at ten, if it could start at, at you know, seven, they'd walk as many minutes, and that timing really worked because the later it stayed, the. you know, seven, they'd walk as midnight. And that timing really worked because the later it stayed, the later it stayed lighter, the field is more used.
Right.
I mean, so, yeah, um. The lacrosse ball moved uh to the end of the um dirt field, which hopefully everybody finds uh a lot of use for there. And I think it doesn't interfere, or all the people here thought that it was a better location. And maybe they took that in the old school board while they were over there. Um and then big news is that the, I don't think we talked about this, the Audi deal closed on February fourteenth. Yay, so we sold it, we got the money, and we paid off the damn nine.
Yay, thank you. I don't know when they're going to start marketing there.
Um. I I think they're using the existing building, so I'm not sure.
Adapted to your. I mean, I mean, there's no, it's private.
Um. They have a wish to accept the department in one of the reports. I'm hoping to set them up there. All in favor? Uh we don't have any correspondence, I believe. Um do we have any unfinished business? Oh, we do have new business, um. Yeah, this was added to back, uh having the mobile motor pageal commission.
Um yeah, earlier, uh or the end of last week, more people asked if they could again come with the uh mobile van um on either April first or fourth. Um he didn't give me any any more information than that. I'm assuming he wanted me to library parking lot again because I was very concerned because the train station couldn't do internet. Um. Library, there were a lot of uh issues last year. I don't remember where they were, um. But it was very confusing because the library is a little bit disrupted itself. They weren't allowed to use our internet. They were having trouble getting your internet. Everybody was behind. So I did mention to him, I said, oh, there were a lot of issues um last year, because I had figured responded, he hasn't responded. So um if they do want to come, you may have to agree that because it would be a fun. So.
Can they do it on five different levels?
It would be on the homeowners insurance or the store members insurance. But yeah, maybe it would be more appropriate, like if even, um I always want to say the kings, but it's not kind of this the Burnsville Center, you know, that's such a big, if they were over on the side, if we could ask them if they mind.
I mean, that would be so much, so much. It'd be, I think it'd be a much better.
Yeah, it'd be safer too, unless people coming and going in the now and driving or whatever.
And I think I think, do you, do you check if they give us some?
I didn't remember anything back yet.
Because if they give insurance, they can get out of the bracket. Imagine. So to be, I just didn't want to bring up for the first time the American.
Um what Russ just said is you would, how about Kiwanis or muller grounds?
I'm seeing like traffic wise and then.
Uh the the pool parking lot.
I guess the problem is that um, well, the pandemic, it's full day.
Oh, that's true.
And that's where the problem.
But Kiwanis.
I know, but it's not a win.
Yeah, it's.
Her situation. You know, you want to have some more testimony.
I just imagine that. Well, they, we had an issue.
It sounds like for her, you know, that they should end for them to, well, it makes sense if you believe them.
It's not, they they closed down the one train station. And they have a situation, so.
Everybody can log into Starbucks. Yeah, I would think that um Brett and the seal would be helping, it brings more people into the big wall, this family. That's a good idea. Another open session, if anyone in the public would like to speak. You look start public. Is Austin there?
Yeah, I'm here. I was checking to see if anyone else was still. Looks like it's just me.
Yes, voice recording, Dr. Miss. Yeah, exactly.
It's like one might be like at a private mall.
So, yeah, so they've done that.
Yeah, because church park, uh they're being turned empty.
Yeah, and all the children to do like all the. All by its school.
Yeah, to the schools.
No, I do too. I have to.
Um, okay, and nobody, uh they closed the public session? We didn't really have a session, no? There are a lot into your journal.
All right, good night, everyone. See you.